It is 7:08 and this is the June meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a few items on the agenda this evening. First item on our agenda is a Clerk's Report. Do we have anything from the Clerk's Office?
Yes. We sold 359 garbage tags, completed three payrolls, attended Planning Board Workshop and Meeting.
Sorry, go ahead.
And we will be closed for the July 4th holiday.
That's it? Thank you very much. I need to correct myself. There is actually a public hearing this evening for the purpose of hearing comments on the Village of Tivoli's proposed procurement policy, which we have had posted. I see no members of the public here this evening. It is 7:08 when I call the meeting to order, and if there's anyone wishing to address the Board of Trustees on the proposed procurement policy.
And actually, if I could, Mr. Mayor, and on the specifically the local law to amend the Chapter 56 of the Village Code relating to the procurement policy.
Which I will ask the Board of Trustees to adopt tonight, but seeing that there are no members of the public here to address the Board, I would entertain a motion to resume regular business.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Trustees Roddy. We will actually close the public hearing with that motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. That's called editing on your feet. Thank you for the Clerk report. You've had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting as well as a special meeting. We'd like to take all of those minutes together. So at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Sing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. The Deputy Clerk announced that the Village Hall will be closed on the Fourth of July holiday. I'd also like to remind everyone that the Village Clerk's Office will be working a summer schedule. The start time for the Village Clerk's Office is 8:30, closing at 4:30 Monday through Thursday, and on Friday the hours are 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Moving on to a Treasurer's Report. You've had an opportunity to review all of the invoices to let you know what we are paying out this month. In the General Fund, we are paying $43,579.08. In the Water Fund, $10,684.89. In the Sewer Fund, $7,028.24. Gives you a grand total of $61,292.21. I would draw your attention to a large bill for the New York State Workers' Comp that is in there. At this point, I would entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. A reminder that the Treasurer's Report is posted weekly, monthly, following the adoption on the Village webpage. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
It was two aspects.
Thank you very much, except I don't have in front of me the breakdown. Do you have the second breakdown? I apologize.
Correct.
I didn't grab that one. While we're waiting for that, Trustees Roddy, do you want to give a zoning report?
I'm just looking through it right now. The zoning enforcement officer, we have asked him to provide to us not only issuance of permits, certificates of occupancy, finalization or financial inspections of buildings, et cetera, but also provide to us an event report which results from his going through the village or responding to complaints that may be brought to his attention. This month, there were some interesting complaints. Two neighbors complained of cats peeing in their gardens, so I guess the idea here is to the extent that you can keep your pets in your room. But the one that I enjoyed the most is that a bird in one, at one property apparently has been over-exuberant about spring and has been causing a great deal of noise. So there are issues with neighbors and sometimes they're challenging. In addition to that, there have been two building permits purchased for changes in signage and replacement of the wood stove, and there have been a couple of closed-out permits for activities. There you have it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Since this is a new fiscal year, there are always two abstracts that need to be adopted. So the abstract, this is actually Abstract One of the fiscal year 2014 finishing up. Out of the General Fund, there's being paid $43,512.18. Out of the Water Fund, $3,471.70. Out of the Sewer Fund, $1,114.59. And that gives you a grand total of $48,098.47. So at this point, I entertain a motion to accept Abstract One. You previously accepted Abstract Number 13 for the record. Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and we will make sure that we post both on the Village webpage. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Thank you very much. I only had one in my book. I apologize. Treasurer's Report, is that a report? I don't believe there, actually, there is a correspondence in my book, I believe, from Judge Clark.
It's in the trustee's report.
It's a letter from the Honorable Howard Clark. "Village Board just informed me the balance of the grant money, which was 10% of the total amount, has been used to purchase supplies for the court, thus reducing village expenditures for mandatory court supplies." And this was a grant that was applied for by the Village of Tivoli Justice Department, which gave us the chairs and air conditioners.
Yes, these four chairs, all those chairs, two newer, more efficient air conditioners, and you did not get a new chair.
I did not get a new chair. That's fine.
Because your chair's doing fine.
It's fine.
Some of those out there were not doing fine. These are nice.
So, and our thanks once again to Justice Clark and his Deputy Clerk, Barbara Malinsky. Moving on to our regular order of business, first item on the agenda tonight is to authorize the clerk and/or deputy clerk to solicit bids for the purpose of repairing the crosswalk at the Village's main intersection, as well as installing a crosswalk here in front of Village Hall, which would actually cross over to Pine Street. This will be paid for with CHIPS money, which is Community Highway Improvements Programs. So these are state dollars that the Village of Tivoli receives for the purpose of improving roads within the Village of Tivoli. Just so folks are aware, we plan to take up the existing brick that is at the intersection here and stamp that with really a faux brick. It'll look like brick, but it will actually be painted and stamped. And here in front of the Village Hall will be an actual crosswalk, similar to what the Village of Red Hook has there, right in their business district. This allows for, especially children, to safely cross from the Village Hall over to the Pine Street entrance. And since we have brought back the summer camp this year, once again, and doing it in concert with the Village Library, children will be crossing back and forth between the two areas, so we wanted to have a safe structure for them. This was actually, came up at a conversation we had with Karen Cleveland a few months ago about the intersection. So I want to thank Karen, who's actually visiting her grandchildren tonight, but I know will be watching, so I want to thank Karen for that suggestion. So at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the authorization of the Village Clerk or Deputy Clerk to solicit the bids.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? To let folks know, Trustees Roddy brought this up once before. We actually have already, we have stamped sidewalks in the Village of Tivoli over here in Pine Street, and we're going to restamp that so people can actually see it better. Right now, it's really faded because of the weathering that is taking place. We're going to restamp that as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is heating oil for the 2014 and '15 heating season. I am recommending to the Board to choose Costco Oil. This is a company that is on the state contract, which prevents us from having to go out to bid since Costco's already been bid out with other, with New York State. We have Costco right now. We have a good working relationship with them. They know the building. They know our equipment. And I would recommend to the Village Board that we go with Costco for our heating oil for the Village of Tivoli. This is our motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Israidi, and whispered, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Sing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adoption of local law 2014-2. This is what we discussed in the beginning of the meeting with regards to a local law that is necessary so the Village of Tivoli could amend its code with regards to a new procurement policy. And this is a local, this has to be a local law because we're amending code. The procurement policy for the Village of Tivoli is actually somewhat outdated, and this procurement policy, we believe, will give the Village of Tivoli more teeth. It will require a purchase order system and something that we believe is necessary with regards to keeping accounting in check. So any purchases within the Village of Tivoli would require a purchase system, a purchase order, which is something that we are working on right now in concert with the, in concert with Dutchess County that are assisting us with developing a purchase order.
It will also distribute the levels of review, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Which will hopefully, I mean, you want more orderly, but you also want a more user-friendly system so that when people come with legitimate requests for funds, they might get bottlenecked by.
Right.
In special units.
And the purchasers should be known would include the mayor, the deputy mayor, trustee for, trustee and trustee liaison for department, the clerk treasurer, deputy clerk, DPW superintendent, the fire chief, and the court clerk would all be purchasers that we would, that we would recognize. So at this point, I entertain a motion, adoption of local law 2014-12.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to explain and probably ask counsel for help explaining why this is a local law and it will only be this year. Currently, our procurement policy, I'll try, you can correct. Currently, our procurement policy is in the Village Code, which is not where most municipalities keep their procurement policy. So one time only now, we will be passing this law to move it out of the code and put it in a place where we can tinker with it regularly, update it without having to pass a law every time. It'll just be a resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct, and in fact, it is recommended and required that you annually review your procurement code and look to see whether or not it needs to be updated. So this will make it easier for you to do that, and it'll be a reminder that every year around the time that you're doing your reorg, you're going to be looking at your procurement policy and sometimes adjusting it a little bit to make sure that it's working well for you.
Since this is a local law, there's no further discussion, a roll call vote. Trustee Israidi?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the actual adoption of the procurement policy for the Village of Tivoli. The Board has had an opportunity to review this, and we have all agreed that this, we believe, is in the best interest of the Village of Tivoli. Said earlier, with regards to the local law, we believe this has more teeth and gives the Village of Tivoli more checks and balances. It will take some time getting used to, I'm sure, with department heads, but we believe this is in the best interest of the Village with regards to fiscal stability. That being said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution for the new procurement policy for the Village of Tivoli?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Sing none, a roll call vote. Trustee Israidi?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Passes. The next Village, oh, I know, I wanted to inform everyone. We had a conversation with the Dutchess County Department of Public Works with regards to the stone bridge here entering into the Village of Tivoli. That is, in many opinions, really the center of our village and really one of the defining structures of our village, and that is on a schedule to be repaired, we believe, sometime in 2015. The reason that that date has changed is because it is owned by, owned and operated and maintained by Dutchess County. And other bridges, as they deteriorate worse and their condition changes, the change, that dictates the date in which we do the repairs. So that's the reason that bridge has not been repaired yet, because other bridges, in the opinion of Dutchess County, are in worse condition. So we're looking at a change of start date, maybe of 2015, when I, I don't know. But I wanted to let everyone know, and the Deputy Mayor and I have sent, and we will send another letter, this is now the third commissioner that we've worked with down in Dutchess County. They have a new commissioner of public works, but we'll send a letter stating that when improvements and changes are made to the bridge, that they maintain the historical character of that particular, of that particular bridge. So I just want to let everyone know. The next Board meeting for the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees is July 16th at 7:00 here at Village Hall. There will be a workshop at 6:00 in the Mayor's Office, and a regular workshop will be held July 9th, 6:00 in the Mayor's Office. Moving on to Commander Reports, Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Thank you. The Water Department report for the month of May 2014, as every month, there's a Water Systems Operation Report, which they take microbiological samples at two locations throughout the village, making sure that we have no violations in the water system. We do not in the month of May, and the sampling locations were North Road and Spring Street. And it's nice to see the place where there are usually water main breaks listed is blank. A rough one. The Community Garden is, is there now. There are plants, there are flowers.
It's blooming.
It's blooming. It's really nice. So I just wanted to, again, thank our volunteers who came forward to coordinate this year, Danielle Ryu and Mara Randville. We have no plots available for the season, but if you're interested in next season, you can contact tivoli community garden at gmail dot org. And I invite you to stop by the garden next time you're in the village, or if you haven't been across the village in some time, go in and take a look and enjoy it. It's really beautiful. It's very welcoming. I thought we might mention yard sale day, if we haven't. Do we have to?
No, but we should. Go ahead.
Well, it's the next one. Maybe you can help me out. What's the date of yard sale day?
26.
Saturday the 26th, yard sale day. And if you want to be on the map produced by the Clerk's Office, would you?
Yes, there's an application online that they can fill out, or they can pick them up here outside of our office.
And it's $10 for the application to be on the map that we distribute.
Yes, if you have the $20, if they don't have space, then they can rent the space at the long Broadway in front of Village Hall.
See, I'm planning on having yard sales, so I just want to put that out there. And also, the Village has been able to take advantage of a county program by which we're able to acquire four bike racks, which we'll be putting over at the Memorial Park, and these can service both the bus stop and the rest of the park. So, you know, you can put your bike on the front of the loop bus, come to the Village of Tivoli, lock your bike up, tour the village, et cetera. So the mayor has volunteered to pick them up with the village truck, saving some DPW hours, which is great. And as soon as we get them, we'll put them in the park. Thank you. That's what I have.
Trustee Israidi?
The LoSeP program has been completed, but we're, the paperwork got lost temporarily, so we should have that back in line by tomorrow, I think. Planning Board met for a workshop on Monday, and we'll be meeting again on?
Monday.
Monday, this coming Monday. Zoning has not had any meeting, but I was able to take a member of the Planning Board and two members of the Zoning Board to the Dutchess County Planning Federation a month ago, and we sat through four hours of presentations, and we, those four people are certified. And we did it at whopping cost of $5, which included dinner.
Wow. What you had?
So it was a, it was a good deal. The Fire Department is making some plans to do some refurbishing of their buildings, so it will be an opportunity to test out their procurement policy.
Timing is everything.
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Bruno?
Okay, well, being that we're at our June meeting, it's no secret that school will be let out soon. And with that, right after it ends, comes our 2014 Tivoli Recreation Summer Program. It will begin on Monday, June 30th. It will run through Friday, July 25th. And we're so fortunate that this year, we're going to be working with the library. So our typical program would run from 9:00 a.m. until noon in the park. Following that now with the library, participants can come to the library from 12:00 to 2:00. The usual day for rec in the park is your sports, arts and crafts, board games, and on a warm day, it's going to be great for all of these kids to come over, 12:00 to 2:00, air conditioning. They can bring their lunch, maybe some reading time. They can jump into the summer reading program, but also some of the boys can hang out and cool off with some Legos and play some other indoor games. The camper health history form is on the website. For participants, we require one year of kindergarten, and along with the health form, we would need immunization forms from the participant's physician. And then also with the library, there's a form that you can, in conjunction with ours, have your child participate in the lunch bunch, which I think is just completely adorable. I think that's so cute. And they will come right on over here, and a two-hour extension to the day, I think, is just idyllic for, for these kids and for the parents as well.
And that was secured through a grant that the library received?
Yes. Yep. We worked collaboratively, back in the winter, I think, was the word. So we were able to, to work together on that. And the library is just incredible. They have so many programs that they're, that they're running now. And one, which is going to be considered, as I end it, out of this world, on Friday, August 15th at 9:00 p.m. in Memorial Park, there will be a family stargazing program. A cloud and a rain date will be the next day, Saturday evening, August 16th, still at 9:00 p.m. This is provided by the library and also the Mid Hudson Astronomical Association. So I think that's going to be a really nice event for so many people in the park. And speaking of the park, keep an eye out. We have Pokey the Snail, who will be making his debut. We have a small piece of equipment. It's one of the spring riders. Also, a surfer for, for the young children in that little small area with the spring riders. We'll have some new ones. And we have our handicapped swing, adult, and also a juvenile swing, which will encompass ages of young children up through youth for the one, and then adult should be coming in shortly. And I think, that's what I have.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider?
I am going to start off with a, just a summary of the Shared Services Meeting that was held this morning. As we've discussed before, the Shared Services Study is being done through a grant that we received in conjunction with the Town and Village of Red Hook to evaluate the feasibility of consolidating highway services, or, excuse me, not just consolidating, but consolidating or sharing certain aspects of highway services. We were a little overdue for our meeting, so this morning ran for about two and a half hours, but I think we're all caught up to speed now. The consultants that were hired have been performing their information gathering. They've performed interviews with staff at all three of the municipalities, from mayors right on down to the highway department employees. There is still some outstanding information requests that have not been met as of yet, and there'll be some efforts to get all of that information to the consultants so that they can better, excuse me, prepare their evaluation or assessment of the current conditions. We had a brief discussion this morning on one of the challenges of the study being that villages, particularly a DPW, will provide services that aren't necessarily performed by a town highway department. So a decision was made this morning between the three municipalities to open up the scope of the study a little bit to include some of those ancillary services, and that would allow us to explore additional avenues of cost savings in regard to those services being offered. The next meeting of the Shared Services Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, July 16th at 9:30 a.m. at the Red Hook Village Hall. We are rotating the location of the meetings to ensure accessibility. Those meetings are open to the public for observation. There is not an opportunity for public feedback during the regular committee meeting. There is, however, a public meeting that has been scheduled for Wednesday, July 23rd at 7:30 p.m. at the Red Hook Village Hall. I believe the courthouse notices will, of course, be posted for that. A final request for information, I think I said this already, but a final request for information will be issued by the consultants to break down the information that they still need to complete their status. We are on par with the timeline that was originally provided as far as the project movement with the slight delay in the public meeting. But as I said, that will, that's already scheduled for the end of July. Other than that, I'd like to talk to all of our village business owners. So by the end of this week, a letter will be going out to all village business owners that will invite them to a forum with Mayor Cranna and myself to gauge interest in formally forming a Tivoli Business Alliance, brainstorming and exchanging ideas for ways to have the businesses here benefit through participation in our local events. Joel, I know you mentioned yard sale day. That's one that is upcoming, and I would really love to be able to see our local businesses benefit from that. Additionally, I am slated to meet with Board members from the Village Library, the Tivoli Village Library. You know, we talked last month about the budget vote and how they're really seen as a community hub, a community center. And so I really think they'll be an integral part of helping Tivoli bring more business to our local businesses here. I will end with our Village Court Charge Summary Report. Total charges received was five, charges disposed 30. Total money collected and remitted to the state controllers, $868. And that, of course, is for the month of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to come before the Board? If not, I would like to announce, I think I mentioned it last week in my meeting, but I don't believe that I announced the members were of the Mayor's Advisory Cabinet. For the record, it's Vin Roca, Emily Major, Leslie Baker, Jeff Scales, Christine Houlihan, and I've also-- and I'll also be appointing a Bard College student to serve as well. And we'll probably be having our first meeting in about 10 days. So that being said, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. 7:38. Yeah, we did well.